Absolutely not. I don't think this will ever be used, but it is a viable option. But it's a viable option that could be used. He all tried to do that, I'm saying we're not.
You're not only punishing the kid, you're punishing the school.
We should agree that the school has to maintain its standards, right? If you don't have a standard, then listen.
No, I'm just asking, stay the same way.
Then you get in a fight later. I mean, I think leaving it in there is not as far. It's a possibility is how I look at it. This is, this is, you, you have, the school has offered that needs boundaries. You could do what you want in here, but you can't exceed those.
What they think it out, but you guys are like. You're a rule today.
I would leave it there as an option, change it to Friday school. It was an option. So for me on this page, I need other records.
We have. It's social for us, it's the action state of those who violate another. They're not saying this call to do something another.
I think Friday is going to be the same thing.
No, I don't give a lot to do that. Hello, surrender, but I sure. He's looking for a team. I know one day he comes to ask me for my for Friday school.
We're gonna say to you in the public way, but you know.
It's okay, Sherry's gonna tell me no before. So on that.
So all brackets on that page.
Yep.
For just, well, all brackets on.
So change Saturday and Friday.
Or change Friday.
Uh, and then administrative, um, regulation is just the form and I don't believe there is others. Up at the top, um, the vice prohibited, prohibit.
Oh, no way, you're on the last page.
Is there, is there a third on the?
And I think the.
Yeah, building super.
And then if they had issues, it involved.
There's a complaint. Yep.
And then we also like the last bracket, this policy case that happened January one, twenty twenty six, or what date within the future.
Yes. In the year twenty twenty six.
So the brackets on that page, that's including important for that lines out.
And then the AR, uh, there's a copy of the AR in there. A parent regarding me requesting the exception of the personal electronic device, um, provision by submitting the following form to, uh, principal. So that doesn't change. And I think.
For one, the master duration of the exception. Should be the middle one, right at the end of the screen. So every year.
Yes, every year. Yep.
So the middle.
Yep.
On the second one.
That, that's it?
From the last page, we have one for more.
Well, we just didn't use.
Ten ways. And the ten days for their receipt, nor it will and like different.
Yep.
And then the exceptions.
Yep. Okay, that was cumbersome. I'm sorry. Thank you for working through that. And it's all your question. Yeah.
One more time. Second by the end. Um, five point one, FA national convention.
This is J K Slaw, she's the president, and I'm. We are committed to move up the lex, more, uh, upwards for us to have a national level. Sorry, I didn't. Okay, um, so this is kind of a breakdown for us specifically in kind of what we're looking at. For national convention, for those of you who don't know what national convention is, or have never been or seen online, um, this is a little. This is their statement that is on that first page. It's the largest annual gathering that I've ever in the nation. Uh, where over seventy thousand members, advisors and guests come together to compete. Or compete, learn about our cultural careers, network and industry leaders, attend workshops and vote on issues facing the organization. Um, in a sense, it's a sea of blue jackets. All that blue members wear blue jackets while they're there, the advisors are dressed up in their nice outfits. And if you look in a room and it is nothing but blue. Uh, it's, it's a kind of outstanding thing to see. Um, when you get to that next page there, um, when is national convention this year? It's October twenty ninth through November first. Um, we're planning to travel anywhere from depending on flights. Um, anywhere from the twenty eighth to the twenty ninth and then coming back tomorrow along the day of the third of November. That gives our students a little bit of mention to tours, but also see Indiana. Which that is where it tells, in Indianapolis, Indiana. Um, but right now, we currently have one student, Ms. J K, planning to attend. Um, this has kind of been a four year thing that I've been talking with kids about. Um, every kid's situation is a little different and I'll kind of extend that when we get towards the end. Um, but right now she's our one kiddo who is like, yes, I'm going, I'm putting money down. Let's go, kind of a thing. Um, so I would like to attend with her for sure this year, if not with additional students. If that seems fit depending on some of logistics. Um, so why do we want to go? We want, I want to give this opportunity, this great opportunity for students to learn about a variety of ag and, um. Not only in that area, but also in a different beauty of it. And that'll come with some of our tours and workshops that they'll understand, um, as well as new leadership skills for some of those students to bring back and share with other students. Um, and one again, just new in real stuff they haven't thought of. Um, that next page starts to break down some of our costs that we've been looking at. Lights right now, last I looked for a round trip, they're looking at up approximately three hundred and eighty dollars. We're planning to fly into Indy out of Netford and coming back into Mopher out of Indy. Again, that's depending on the day and the name, what we plan to book for these flights, um, will depend on those prices. Um, luggage dependent on the airline is about eighty dollars max for both there and back. For them to be able to take one carry or their carry on and one checked back. Um, so in total, a kid is looking at four hundred and sixty dollars a flight. Uh, rental car, we're looking at about five fifty five, sixty six dollars a day. Um, with the fees included, we're looking at around six hundred dollars for that rental car that's something fundraising for, um, throughout it. Or throughout the last few years. Um, I did a little research because I know gas is going to have to be paid in some way, shape or form. Um, so I put some prices down there, kind of in a simple budgeting wise. Uh, it's not a guarantee right now. Quick Google search, uh, gas right now out of Indianapolis is three dollars and ten cents. Like Alex. Um, and it also says that an average person out of Indianapolis is getting about two hundred dollars a month on gas. I. However, we all, we always like to over budget because I don't, I can't guarantee it. One of the tours is technically in, um. In Kentucky. Wrong one, um, in Kentucky, uh, to attend the legal slugger, so we'll be driving two hours to get there and two hours to come back. And that, so that also gives a little buckle room for there as well. Um, Best Western is kind of our hotel that we would change to choose even in City of Oregon when we're planning to go somewhere. Um, we have an account, the chapters, so it goes on there at earth points, we can use it there too. It's approximately because they know it's happening. Those hotel costs depending on the night and how many kids, um, it kind of looks anywhere from one seventy to two oh one a night. Um, where they're for about five nights, we'll do two separate ones as of right now, one for J K and one for me. Um, depending on students and final numbers, you might change those, um. In the total in one. Uh, but right now we're looking at about two thousand dollars with tax on pay tolls for this. In a room by herself, I'm like, I'm sure, I'm sure she's home. There's so many, I just get.
She can't get secure on the.
Yes. Right. And I always look, when I book the hotel rooms, I always make sure that my rooms are next to theirs. So I fall ahead and be like, hey, I need rooms next to each other. So I'm either on the other time across the hall or right next to her. And it's worked out really well. Oh, I do, yes.
That's, that's an educator trick of the treasures.
Oh, I do, um. We did. There's been times where I will change the color of the tapes depending on how many nights were there. So even if it was like, hey, go put blue tape on my door from another chapter. Then that night it's not blue tape, it's a little blue tape than I before and different color this time. So then I know, and I go in the morning and take the tape off and knock on the door so that they know they're good, go out and get breakfast kind of thing. So. Uh, these are definitely things that I've thought through for many of years, looking at traveling with the kids on a regular basis. Um, I'm gonna let J K kind of talk about the tours that we're planning to go to.
Uh, I think it's important to have already done this. Parents, students, you know about.
And constantly involve my, uh, like events and fundraisers, that's like one of the main things to discuss. So all the kids are already commended.
Yeah, so we've talked about it. Um, I wanted to come and get final approvals from you guys before I really sit down with parents and talk about those things. Like will I do, be like, okay, do we have a little idea? I also wanted to connect with Jenna a little bit more because she's taken students out of state before and meeting those ideas. If they're minor versus not minor kind of situation on. The airport, because I don't know all those logistics, like those are up in the conversation. So I'm going to let J K take over a little bit on the tours.
So we have at least four, um, words planned that cost money. So the in the. Way, maybe learning the automotive industry and history of traffic and law and how people go. I know some of our education members are wanting to go into mechanics, so we have an opportunity there to learn in police. First cars are built and how they operate and a lot of chapters go in there. Like to provide to my dad that I could there, so. And we're also. Um, the N C A A program of chair cans for the ag sports in their history. Um, she might hang out with this one.
I'll explain a little bit. It's the college college champions and their sports. And I've seen it myself. There's a wide history on how things have changed over time and how we can change or look at the adages that goes into those products all the time. Like football used to be, it's been, now it's cattle. And how that changed and how that look has changed all the time in the rise of ag and those.
And we need work to get realized and just be told on it is different to just sitting down. This is what that was made of. Or no picture as well. Awesome. At least me. Um, we're going to, and she said, we will get. That word sluggers and need to know the history of the forestry and how facts were made. Um, and learning how we process and integrate into that. And I think that would be pretty cool as well. Uh, some things are also appreciated in my forestry. I know we're wanting to compete in the contest this, this year, so getting to understand how they make backs from trees and what different types of trees and then. It can be awesome. And then we're going to one, um, farm, um, Fair Oak Farm. And it's a large produce, um, production, long work. For animal tires, gotta practice. And learning those small community, even though we do have farms, we don't get to really see big productions of cattle, chicken, hogs. Stuff like that to be able to visualize and knowing how big those farms, we're able to learn how they run them. And knowing the industries and who we connect with and how they do. Processing many meats or knowing how a property to take care of a large property of cattle would be beneficial, beneficial for people that show ourselves.
Um, one of the things, if you've never been to Fair Oaks Farms, um, recent numbers have shown that. In their animal head count, they have about thirty eight thousand dairy cattle as well as the thirty eight thousand head dogs. Um, so for our cows, that's significant more than what they're used to seeing, um, and it would just be a thing I could work for. Um, in addition to that, they're going to also be, uh, like I said, doing their, uh, workshops or at the convention. Um, on leadership, other things that they can bring back to the chapter and whatnot. Um, but also working with colleges and careers because there's a genetic, genetic college and career that they get to go to. And as J K being a senior, she'll get to get, meet some of those schools that maybe she hasn't properly talked to yet, that she's been looking at. Which will be fun.
And last time we checked, when my experience is a state. Um, big leaders are not the national F A officers who are teaching these workshops. But some of the national might be some different state officers being able to get the opportunity to meet those other state officers. And seeing the different workshops and how different leaders are built and how they do work is a great opportunity, especially for me as a chapter president. Also running for state, so being able to see and visualize. Those, um, leaders and they probably probably were with their teams and.
So the last little piece of information there is a grant opportunity. Um, national F A puts out a grant opportunity specifically for travel assistance. Um, I've gone ahead and applied for that grant. I was supposed to last week, I received it. I got a email on Thursday saying they're commissioning it back to me this coming Friday. Um, last year they gave out three grants for the state of Oregon alone. There's no guarantee on how much. I currently plan to attend six kids because I have up to eight kids and if they had additional assistance, they'd be able to go. So the goal is with that is even if we only get one or two more kids to go, that's one or two more kids that want.
And then considering your. Sunraising efforts with your, with the greenhouse to help offset those expenses of travel?
Some potentially, um, it would have to be a discussion with the greenhouse class. Because they've been, it's been a set thing where it's been satisfied specifically to eventually bring in a secondary, uh, perennial greenhouse. So that we can keep it going as a smaller scale. Um, but there is a potential and if these students buy the account, I don't want to just take that money and be like, families, it's always kind of big. Um, I don't foresee them not giving us some promote coordinates. Um, through this, doing that with other three chapters that we received it last year. Um, my home chapter, you received it and my class was four hundred kids. So it's one of those things where not just small schools, every unit, but also larger schools.
Well, there's something to me during your convention. I know a lot of our kids in our chapel have it even in outside state or even get. So this is also providing, just sometimes the most basic experiences can set up with the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Well, it's a great opportunity to install a school.
It also is our school.
I mean, last time I was in Indianapolis with a thing. We have two other places that I don't know if it's on the list or not, but that I would give for sure. One is you gotta go to your show. Um, it's, I, that's one of the best tours.
Yes.
I've always been part of. And then the other is, is you gotta rent a car. We'll win the Ohio and go check out Orange Country and stop and purchase some things at some orange farm, farms. That's an amazing experience as well.
Um, I, but in conversation with the advisors that I've been working with to kind of help me with playing some of the things. Um, they probably, they do two routes. They do the Chicago route or they do the Kentucky route. And so they go through, we go Kentucky. This year, um, with everything happened so fast. I danced down a little bit, but yes, Kentucky Derby, Turkel Down, those are things that in the future that I'm like, I want those things to be together. They're amazing tours. It's flying. I got the opportunity when I went to actually watch horses running around the Kentucky Derby rally track. And it's just, they're not standing there to see it. They can't even just be impressed.
Now, the cool thing on that tour is they take up the big kids back to the horse stalls. It where normal people that are learning, I can't, it's, it's amazing. Just a couple ideas, but good job. I'm excited for you guys.
Any other questions or concerns for us?
So. The, so you're asking. The board potentially fund the money?
No, just work people that need to go.
Yeah, I know, I, I get that. So there's the normal form that gets it, but I, it threw me off their app, uh, the grant.
So it's been a grant through national F A. I've already submitted it. They're going to tell us if we receive the grant on Friday.
But if they say no.
We've been, J K and I have been working on figuring out residence so that she still is able to go, so we can get her access to it. The grant is to allow additional students to be able to.
It's to make it less expensive since we're not the most richest community and allowing the kids to be able to afford.
No, absolutely. It just threw me off a little because it was thrown out, so I thought it was gonna pay for it. So then it's like, okay, wait a sec, who's paying for what?
Sorry, the greenhouse and F A account are separate right now, which is why I said. Alex did it, yeah.
Are you moved to approve the, um. On the great management convention. Access to, uh.
Mr. Chair, you may require her to come out to share her experience.
Absolutely.
She already is required to. It's a part of the agreement, which is why she's here.
There was no agreement.
Now, now it's forcibly against your.
One year when I went there with no cars, where I can hear, the second that I went for my marriage degree, it was very much, we got there and there were just cars running on. And then you're like, what is happening? Some person had paid for a trip around the track a few times. So in Florida, we were just sitting there watching.
Just the sound.
Yeah, that sound is really cool. So thank you so much for putting this here. And we will import you on with the grants.
No, we will. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, five point two.
Yeah, I just, um. Just wanted to highlight the facility assessment, O D E, um. Uh, spent a bunch of money on statewide to gather information about condition, a twenty year condition of. Buildings in every school district across the state of Oregon. And, um, this twenty year assessment basically is building a, a budget based on what. It, it current inflationary cost would cost. If we planned out twenty years to address maintenance issues as a district, some of which is a little bit crazy. Um, like they have things from signs have to be thirty six inches. So if they're thirty inches, you gotta replace it or repair it. To, um, twenty years from now, it'll cost one point five million dollars to pave the parking lot over at the gym. Or seventy two thousand dollars to rewire the old gym because there's some old, um. Older wiring in that building that's dated, not inspected, but dated back, uh, as old. So anything that was more than forty years of age, they just assumed some things and then put them in the cost estimates. That would give us a top amount of money that it would cost within twenty years. And if you did it before twenty years, it would be less than, than that. So there's, uh, some interesting things that they found, um, on that assessment. I would encourage you to go through it. We'll utilize some pieces of it in our comprehensive plan conversation as we move forward with, um, uh, budget and facility. Terry needs, uh, with the comprehensive planning. O D E has a plan to take these numbers from all the districts and take it back to the legislature. To have a conversation about, look, in twenty years, at the max, maximum number of years. In our districts across the state, there's this amount of money that's tied to deferred maintenance and, um, and repair. Of school district buildings and, and facilities that the legislature needs to try to figure out. How to address because some districts either don't go for bonds, can't pass a bond, what have you. But have these deferred maintenance issues as districts. And so they're creating a narrative, um, to go back to the legislature with, and that was really the driving force behind the facility assessment. Um, in total, are, there is twelve hundred and the, the, the report's a hundred and twenty nine pages long. There are two thousand two hundred and forty four items of either repair or replace on the list. For a total of ten million, five hundred and forty six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Yeah, so it gives you, it gives, it gives you a, a picture of, uh, yeah, wow. The cool thing about the, the whole assessment was that they didn't find anything in our district. As a nine one one in regards to safety. Now, we know we might have a nine one one issue. But they didn't, they, that, that was not picked up in this assessment because it was case. And they didn't inspect at the level that they would have had to to find that. But the reality is a safety concerns in all the buildings. They didn't find anything that was a nine one one. So that was. They, they did actually go in the bus farm, but you can't see it because it's blocked with. So, and they didn't crawl into the attic and, you know, we know that that's an issue and we're gonna address it somehow, but, um. But the rest of our facilities were pretty solid. Uh, you know, there, you know, we need to replace some gutters and we need new fascia and we need to paint. You know, the entryway to X, Y, or Z. I mean, all of that stuff. And then when, when you're dealing with school districts, how they figure the money, it's all based on the wage. And so it's just, yeah, it's really fast work. So. That's what I have on the O D E facility assessment. And then can I lead the conversation? Yeah, yeah. Um, it's not an action item. It's just you, you, you guys have seen it. It's in the board, we have the board back there.
So before we get to five point, we just want to confirm we are having a five point, Jamie? That's it, Jerry.
So.
I'm digging my phone out tonight. We're going off though.
I, I don't even know where to start this. I'm gonna start where it makes sense in my, in my regard. When I got hired, I'm gonna just speak from my perspective, not the district's perspective. Because I think we all know what the district perspective is and I wrote a letter to Jenny that I'd like to read to the board tonight. But before I read the letter, I wanted to share a little perspective with this. I get older. Personally and professionally, I've become more reflective about life, about paths. The people that cross your path, the people that support your path, the people that don't support your path. Um, and the people that you, you get to work with and call a professional colleague and a friend. And somebody that, um, I've looked to for guidance. And nobody on the board knew what you were getting when you hired me. And I didn't know what I was getting as superintendent when I came to prospect. In fact, I was spooked about that, to be honest with you, because it was my first opportunity to be a superintendent and work with community members. opportunity to be a superintendent and work with community members on the level in which we have worked the last four years, and, and honestly, I, I, I have shared this with my parents. I've shared this with my kids, uh I've shared this with colleagues. Um I've talked about each of you on lots of different levels. From ordering beef to Wyoming cowboy, to the health scare that we had with Ray. The Josh's brain and his brawn when it comes to what he believes is marked in his conscience of being right, and your job, and how your job has contributed to the leadership of this district. To, to Debbie calling me and uh saying, hey, we got this hayfield, would you like to cut this hayfield? To, to Jenny. And when I have expressed to the people that are in my circle of my friends and colleagues on this board. I've shared that Jenny, to me, is a bright spot in the world. Um that she has been nothing but supportive, that you have been nothing but positive. That you have been willing to put in the time and the effort and the energy with a smile on your face and everybody knows it and sees it. And that's pretty amazing. And so to give six years, and I could go around the room, and I could say, share the same thing with each of you, because you have given of your time selflessly to the leadership of this district. And I'm, I am super, super proud of what we've been able to accomplish in three years. We still have a long ways to go, and each of you bring your own perspective. But stop for a second and reflect of where we have been. And the conflict that there was, and the conflict continues because we are all individuals, but I love arguing with Ray. But at the end of the day, collective unity and creating some cohesion is really been the goal of this board and really been the goal of me as being your superintendent, and I could not do it without the individual efforts of each of you and the perspective that you had as leaders being on our school board, and Jenny, you've been a huge, huge part of that. I remember sitting in a union meeting with labor and negotiating with Ray on the, on you and Ray negotiated contract that we got done in six days. Six meetings. That's not normal.
No.
That's exceptional. And it's, and it, and it's because of perspective, it's because of your willingness to, to serve the other people that, that uh work this school district. And I'm just super proud, and I'm super proud to be able to call you a friend and a colleague, and you will be missed immensely. So with that, I just, I want to read this letter. I had a chance to kind of sit down, just kind of formulate my thoughts a little bit, probably less so than what I just shared, but. Dear Jenny, on behalf of my desk, as the superintendent of the Prospect School District. I'm writing to express my deepest gratitude for your years of dedicated service as a member of our school board. Four years ago, when you were part of hiring me as your superintendent, I had no idea what I inherited as a school board member and team. This being said, your membership has been so vitally important to so many things concerning the direction of our district. Your contributions to the leadership and course of the Prospect School District has been unparalleled. Your commitment to our students and our community has left a lasting impact on the entire school community. We are particularly grateful for your insightful contributions to designing of a new staff contract. Setting school or go, goals, as well as your positivity in all things. Your leadership and wisdom has been instrumental in the advancement of my leadership. Wow, geez. And I uh will be forever, I, I will forever appreciate your influence and energy. And understand that serving on the board requires significant personal sacrifice and time. And I truly appreciate and honor your commitment as a member of our team. Thank you for your unwavering dedication, your thoughtful perspective, and the positive influence you have had. Uh while being a member of the Prospect School District Board. While we will miss your presence, we wish you all the best and what comes next for you and us. There's cheesecake.
So Jenny, thank you for your service, thanks for friendship. Um with that, I need to, I completely accept your resignation and open, open position for vacancy with a application date by the end of business, I'm available. And Ron, Dad, there's a whole bunch of upcoming dates.
David Bergman.